I'm back. We are ready to begin our workshop session. It is 6:05 PM. All four council members are in attendance. And we will start our workshop session with the second quarter of fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget and financial review with a three-year forecast. Ms. Florid Bradley and Mr. Wall are going to guide us through this portion of the workshop.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Could I share my screen, boss?
Yes, stand by one second.
Thank you, sir.
You should be good.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Can you see it, Mayor?
We can see it.
We can see it. Thank you.
Great. Good evening, everybody. Althea and I have worked for the last couple of weeks fine tuning the second quarter actual numbers for your major funds. The second quarter would be July 1 to December 31st. So that's six months actual. And then we made a projection for the end of the fiscal year '21 and into fiscal year '22 and into fiscal year '23. To start off with, with the water sewer fund, in June, you all raised rates 5%. It had 1.3 million in cash. It's owed 5.1 million from other funds. As you'll see, the revenues are still down even though we raised rates by 5% and the cost of wholesale water is up. So I'd like you to look, the operating revenue for the first year pre-COVID, and that'll be a running theme in the presentation, is this is pre-COVID. It was $491,000 profit. For the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020, you see revenues had fallen a little bit. Expenses were about the same. You see it had a negative $592,000. So that's why you all had to raise rates 5%. You didn't want to, but you had to raise it. And so for 50% of the budget for the fiscal year '21 is here. You can see the actual here. Right here. And if it's negative, that's bad. So while we raised rates 5% through the first six months, revenues were off $248,000. Here for expenses, a negative is good. So you're $651,000 to the positive through the first six months. You haven't spent as much as you could have spent. And so for the first six months, it had a positive cash flow of $243,000. But January, February, and March, Althea, look at some of the bills that we received from East Point where we purchased wholesale water. And it looks like our cost of sales over here, cost of sales purchases, the cost of water has gone up. And for the year, we were expecting about $5.9 million in cost of sales. Notice it was $5.8 million, but you had a whole lot more revenues. We had budgeted $5.3 million for the year. And so with the revenues not being as high as we'd expected, see the budget's $9 million, and we expect an $8.5 million. We're expecting that the fund is going to have a negative cash flow of $237,000. I'm not real sure what's going on with this fund, but I'd like you as council to instruct staff to dig deeper into it and figure out the cause for it. We have projected '22 and '23, and we've used these same expense numbers. But I just, I don't think, something's not right. And so I'd like to come back to you with these projections. Any questions on this fund before I move on?
Any questions from the body?
No, so you're just telling us you want us to take another look at it and fine tune some of the numbers to make sure they're still correct?
Correct, sir. So this, this projection here, there's something wrong. So I'd like to know why are revenues not what we expect? And why are expenses, in particular, cost of sales, so much higher than we projected? I don't know the answer to that, but those are the two questions you'd like staff to bring back to you.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Go right ahead, Mr. Wall.
Mercedes, did you make a note of that, please, ma'am?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So let's go to the next fund, sanitation. You had to raise rates 10% in June of '21 for the fiscal, in June of '20, for this fiscal year '21. And this fund is doing great. So let's look at the actual. So the budget was $1.2 million in revenues. You've got $1.6 million in revenues. So the rate increase is doing what it's supposed to do. If y'all remember, this fund had 190, look down here, it had $190,000 deficit. And so you raise rates to try to correct it losing money and correct the deficit position. And so the expenses, the budget for the first quarter would be $1.136, there're $1.274. Some of that's COVID, extra COVID money, and those expenses are not too far out of whack. And so the fund for the first six months had a positive cash flow of $359,000. Althea and I projected for 2021, it'll have a $497,000 positive cash flow. And then the projected for '22 and '23, they're a little bit less, but the reason is you're buying some fire trucks. I think you bought three and you got, I mean, garbage trucks. I think you bought three and you got three more on the way. So this fund's doing great. We put a check on it. Any questions?
Any questions from the body? Hearing none. Proceed.
Electric fund. So this fund, it owes the general fund $7.2 million. BIDA owes it $5.8 million. If you all remember, it was losing approximately $4 million a year in negative cash flow. You all didn't want to, but you adopted SaaS recommendation to have a 25% rate increase in June of 2020 for fiscal year '21. You were going to phase it in at 5% a month. This fund is doing much better. I would say this fund is doing just exactly like you'd want it to. The projected, the fund's able to be projected to give $2.1 million towards some of the debts. And so the fund is doing so well, we would transfer $531,000 out of this fund at the end of the year to the GICC. That's a, that's a BIDA or the Convention Center Fund. BIDA Fund, $500,000, and then it'll owe, it owes the general fund $7.2 million. We think it'll pay $1.27 million of that debt back to the general fund in 2021, fiscal year in June 30th coming up.
Well, I have a question on that information. Can you go back for a second?
Yes, ma'am.
So if the transfer, if the electric fund makes that transfer, does it then go up to 6.3 million that BIDA would owe it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And so this, this number would go, this number, this number would go down and that number would go up?
Got it.
No, actually, it would go down because recall, there is a repayment plan where the auditors do not believe that BIDA will ever pay back the funds that it owes the electric fund. So the council did approve, I believe, back in 2016, a repayment plan that basically transfers the funds to BIDA in order to pay down that debt. So it's basically going in and coming, it's coming, it's going out, but coming back in. So it's going to reduce their debt.
To whom?
It's going to reduce BIDA's debt.
To whom?
Electric fund that reduces their debt.
That number will go to 5.3 million?
Yes.
I'm unclear how a transfer from the electric fund to BIDA reduces the debt that BIDA owes the electric fund.
There is a repayment plan. It basically, it pays BIDA the funds, which BIDA turns around and pays back to the electric fund. It's an accounting journal entry. So every year, you would see a transfer out to BIDA and GICC. And that's been occurring since 2016, and it only reduces their debt because the auditors do not believe that BIDA will ever pay back the electric fund or the GICC will be able to pay back the electric fund. So it's reducing their debt.
If it were to
You're writing off the debt. Is that what you're saying?
Exactly. You're writing off the debt. And that's, that's
It's being written off. It's not
Okay. All right. That's, that's, okay. I understand writing off the debt.
If BIDA were to sell property, we couldn't get that money back. It's just the auditors didn't think that we would, so they, they wouldn't allow us to continue to carry that debt as if it were cash that would be paid back.
Correct.
I stand corrected, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for the clarification.
The actual fund, if you would, look at pre-COVID year. The loss was $3.8 million. June 30, 2020, the loss was $4.6 million. You can see the revenues were $27 million here. They were budgeted at $35 million there. The, the budget for the first six months is $18 million. The actual collections is $20.521. That's pretty well on target, $725,000 to the good. The expenses were budgeted at $18 million for the first six months. They came in at $17 million. So $961,000 to the good for the expenses. So cash flow for the year, for the projected 2021 is $39 million in revenues, $33 million in expenses, $5.4 million in cash flow. Down here at the bottom, you can see the transfers out, and I'll show it to you. GICC right here, $531,000, BIDA, $500,000, and the general fund, $1.27 million for $2.86 million. You can see here, they were on sale of capital, $3.484 from this cash flow here. It's $28,000 free cash flow a year, and we transfer and haul that out three months a year. Going forward, this year was $2 million. Althea and I have been very conservative in projecting revenues. Three to 36 for 22, an extra $2 million in expenses. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir. It was, it was a little broke, it was a little choppy there a few minutes ago, but
Yeah, when I get a phone call in, it cuts me out. So the extra expenses are $2 million. The revenues are about the same. So
And you need to turn on do not disturbs so that they don't keep breaking up your transmission.
Excellent. Why didn't I think of that? So how did I just put it on airplane mode?
No, I don't think you want to do
No, I don't put it on airplane mode. Well, eventually you could, but put it to sleep. Go up and you're on a, you're on Mac, right?
Mr. Wall, are you there?
He put it in airplane mode.
Yeah, he put it in airplane mode.
Tell him not to put it in airplane.
I told him not to put it in airplane.
Let me call him.
Calling him via
Okay.
Yeah, hear him.
Welcome back, Mr. Wall.
Can y'all see the screen now?
We can.
Yep. So, so the electric fund, we're showing 5.79 in free cash flow, then 9.09. More than likely, it'll be better than that, but we've been very conservative in projecting it going forward. But the electric fund's doing what it's supposed to do, and I think y'all can put a check in that.
How much better do you think it will be? You said it'll be better. Do you have an idea how much better you think it'll be?
Well, if we have a real hot summer, it'll be better than that. If you have a cool summer, it'll be somewhere between this number and this number. I do think it'll be better than 7.79. It could be as high as this, or it could be a wee bit higher if we have a real hot summer. But I don't think it'll be any worse than that.
And I think Mr. Richardson had told us it, last week during the budget discussions, that he had been pretty conservative on the commercial use as well. So there's that.
Any questions? No question. Car rental tax fund. The 2021 revenues are nearly nothing, as you all know, because of COVID pandemic. We're using its cash reserves for ongoing expenses. Thank goodness we banked them. At the end of June 30, 2021, we'll have $2.4 million in cash. We're planning on using it together with the 22 revenues to make the payments that we need to make and bring that cash balance to zero at June 30, 2022. In December '22, we'll see the make-whole payment from Atlanta. To look at the actual numbers here. Pre-COVID, you can see the revenues were $7.261. We had cut the car rental tax deal with the city of Atlanta so that a lot of money is in there. It's one time, it's not reoccurring. But we did get $3 million and change that year. The Atlanta settles up with us on a car rental payment each December. So actual 2020 was June 30, 2020. So it represents December 19 settlement with Atlanta. All of that was pre-COVID. So you can see the revenues we got from the car rental tax in 2020. For actual, this fiscal year, in December of 2020, we got $180,000 check. So remember, that would have been December and January and February collections, pre-COVID. And then March through December of '20, COVID, where it fell dramatically. And then, you know, in that trade that we made with Atlanta, they pay us $400,000 a year, and we've gotten 200, every 6, 200,000 every six months, we've got one $200,000 payment. So the projected in 2021, we'll, we aren't, we don't think we'll get any more revenues from the car rental tax itself. We'll get another $200,000 payment from Atlantis. We get $580,000. You can see that the transfers out that we're making here to the general fund, nothing, to the BIDA fund, $1.409, and to the arena to pay debt service on the arena, bringing it to $2.8 million. And so that'll leave $2.436 in the bank for June 30, 2021. So projecting for 2020, Althea and I are projecting $2 million in revenues that we'll get in December of, of this year, December '21. And by contract, they have to give us the 400,000. And so these revenues, yes, sir.
You lost me on one thing. I thought we were at $580,000.
You are right here. There's 5.8. So it's 400 plus 1.80.
Right. So how did we get the money to give money, because we were at zero balance, I thought. So how did we get the money to give to those other funds?
Right now, we have 2.4 in there. I think as of June 30th of this year, we'll have 2.4. Is that right?
Yeah, at June 30th, 2020, Councilman Clay, we had $6.142. And so, and so we have drawn down this year $4.278.
Right.
And so $6 million plus 5.80 minus 7,500 expenses, minus $4.278 is going to leave $2.436 as a balance. So June 30, $2.436, so $2.436, together with $2.4 million in revenues, minus 7,500 expenses is going to let us pay out $4.564 in 2022. We're planning on spending that $1.132 to the general fund, $564,000 to BIDA, and then the debt service, $2.867 to the arena. And that'll leave $264,000 balance at June 30, '22.
Okay.
And then projected '23, that's the make-whole payment plus a regular annual payment for '23. Remember, '23 is July 1 of '22 to June 30, '23. Surely with all the vaccines and getting rid of COVID, we'll be back to normal. That's what this '23 budget projects. We'll be able to make all of the transfers like normal, and the fund now goes back to a $3.3 balance. The key part of this fund is will it generate $2 million in December this year? So that's the thing to watch for. There's nothing we can do about it, but that's the key to making this fund, to the extent
I'm sorry. What, what of the first, well, we probably don't have the numbers from March, but what have, what's January and February told us?
Althea, you have those numbers?
Yes, I believe January was around $700,000 and February was about, close to $600,000. And January was $770,000 and February was about $574,000.
Going down. Okay.
So Atlanta gets
Up and down. It goes up and down, so.
So Atlanta gets $8.8 million. So take $8.800, divided by 12, that's the average of $733,000 a month. So anything over an average of $733 a month starts paying us.
They're doing about $1 million a month pre-COVID, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You, on the projection of that $2 million for 2022?
Yes, sir.
Is that projected, you said, December?
Yes, sir.
Is that the first of December or the end of December?
First of December. They give it to us around December the 2nd or 3rd. We have to remind them to give it to us, but it's owed on December 2nd.
Okay.
Of '21.
Correct. Yes, ma'am. And so $8.800,000 is what they get off the top. If I add $2 million to it, that's $10.800,000 in collections. Divide that by 12, that's the average of $900,000 a month.
Okay. Well, you can't divide it by 12. We need to know what December, what was December? Because December, January, and February have told us that we're, we're falling short of that to get our $2 million. So what do we have to make moving forward? What, what has to be garnered in revenue moving forward for us to get $2 million?
Probably a million a month.
Okay.
Maybe not quite that high, but I'll send y'all an Excel spreadsheet showing that.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, that would be, that would be interesting to know. That's going to be close.
It is.
Very close.
Hotel motel tax fund. Cash was zero at the end of fiscal year. Cash at the end of '20, it'll also be zero at the end of '21. For FY '19, the first pre-COVID year, the 8% tax brought in $11.8 million. For FY '20, which had some pre-COVID and some post-COVID, the collection's eight and a half million. We're only projecting that that revenue source is going to raise 4.6 million for all of fiscal year '21. For fiscal year '22, that's July 1 to June 30th, we think it'll go back to the 2020, which had a mixture of pre-COVID and post-COVID. And then, as y'all know, as always, the revenues from hotel motel tax fund is used to tote other funds. The DMO, Destination and Marketing Organization, Convention Center, BIDA, and the general fund. Look at the numbers. So you can see in 2019, see the transfers that it made. You see the revenues were $11.883 for the 8% tax and $1.660 from the special district tax. For '20, you can see that the 8% tax fell down. The special district tax was a wee bit more. Let's go over to the actual for first six months. The occupancy tax was only $2.110. The special district tax, like all real estate taxes, is generally due in December each year, so we collected most of that. So we collected $2.4 million. Y'all remember, y'all went up on the millage rate for the special district tax for the hotels. And that's the reason we collected, we expect to collect $2.714 for the year versus a $1.660 in '19 versus a $1.830 in '20. This number, $4.609, is just this number here, which represents six months, is that number times two, plus a little bit. Hoping things get better now that the vaccine's out. So let's look at this whole year. $7.406 is revenues. It's by formula goes to the DMO. So I've got $6.5 million to transfer out. At June 30, 2020, we had a fund balance of $2.205, $2.025. So $2.025 plus these revenues here allowed us to transfer out 8.5 million in the fiscal year '21. You can see it'll leave cash balances zero. Where did that money go? Went to the general fund, $1.7 million. Went to the GICC, Convention Center Fund, $6.091, and went to BIDA, the Redevelopment Authority, $725,000. So let's go to the '22 projection. That's July 1 of this year to June 30, '22. We kept the property tax the same, the special district property tax. We went to $8.480, the same number we had over here in 2020. The DMO gets this by formula. So it'll leave $9 million in revenues. We transfer out $6.781. And it'll leave $2.247 as a balance. Any questions? Of course, no '23, we're right in range. So the key to this fund is this revenue here, the $8.480. Will that happen? Arena fund, from here on out, it's going to get rough for everybody, so y'all need to buckle up. Arena fund owns the stormwater fund, $1.2 million. BIDA owes the arena fund $3.9 million. Our big ultimate goal is to try to get all these funds paid up, and we counsel out all this debt that's been going back and forth. So each fund stands on its own, except for the car rental tax and the hotel motel tax fund, which were designed to tote the other funds. Arena fund has $10,000 still in cash. Debt service is covered in FY '22 car rental tax balance plus the revenues. Of course, if those revenues don't come in, we'll have to transfer money to the general fund. This year, we're projecting the general fund is going to have to transfer $1.4 million of cash to the arena fund to make it whole. And then FY '22, the operating loss of the arena of $1.2 million is going to be funded by hotel motel tax, if it generates what we have projected. Show you the actual numbers. So the arena fund in 2020 had $910,000 in revenues, first year, real year of operations. The budget for '21 was $3.194. If we take 50% of that, we should have generated $1.597. But in actuality, COVID was really, really bad. We only earned $212,000 in revenues through the first six months. Since January, bookings have increased, so we're projecting Since January, bookings have increased, so we're projecting for FY twenty-one, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. So uh you can see it's a little bit more than that number times two. The expenses, even though um you all worked hard to cut expenses, the expenses uh were budgeted at um this is the debt service number here. So you take these numbers here, those are the expenses. For uh six months, here's the fifty percent number here, here's the actual. So you can see that was less. You see this one substantially less. So y'all did cut expenses, it's just you 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 couldn't hardly cut it to nothing. And um so you just, there was no way to cut the expenses to match the revenues. So this fund, after debt service, will have a four million two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar loss at June thirtieth this year. Car rental tax down here is only bringing in two million eight sixty-nine. So the general fund's got to give it this to make it hold. And then it'll have a cash balance of zero. Going forward to FY twenty-two. Yes, sir.
Sorry to interrupt. I thought you were done. Oh.
No, sir, that's fine.
You said that loan by the three point nine million. Can you remind me, kept remind us what that was? And in your projections, I don't see any land sales that BIDAR would get revenue that goes to pay into this fund.
So um this is Arena Fund and land sales from BIDAR, I'm hoping we use it to pay the electric fund and then the electric fund to pay back to the general fund. So the first payment. I mean, it's up to y'all what you do with it, but the my plan has been so far that when BIDAR sells land, we're gonna use it to restore the general fund fund balance and 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 have BIDAR pay the debt that ultimately goes back to the general fund. But this due from the redevelopment fund, so um is a three million seven four nine. And so um BIDAR owes this fund three million seven four nine. And um it um, Althea, can you help me out with this? It was some sort of advance that they made during the construction of it.
I thought we put ten million cash.
Yeah.
To do that.
What happened was um prior to them separating the two funds by the um from Arena, all the funds were sitting in the BIDAR fund and BIDAR fund, the BIDAR fund had a um loss of cash. Therefore, um the auditors did not want to show a negative cash balance, so basically um it moved what was available to the Arena Fund and BIDAR at that time owed the Arena Fund three point nine million dollars because it was short of cash, but the cash was was sitting in the BIDAR fund. And once they moved the Arena Fund, they separated the two funds, there was a um cash due from BIDAR to the Arena.
Oddly enough, Kelsman gave this fund owes the Stormwater Utility a million two thirty-nine. I believe we're gonna ultimately have to write this off. I don't see any way that this fund can pay that debt back unless the car rental fund gets a big lick, transfers it over here, and then it pays it back. And and reason I'm saying that is um you can see in twenty-two, we're projecting two million one oh seven in revenues. Remember, in twenty-one, the budget was three million one ninety-four, so we're budgeting a substantial less amount for the fiscal year twenty-two. But you can see it'll still won't cover its expenses. And so this debt service is covered from car rental tax. And so it is just consistently upside down from revenues versus expenses. And so we're covering it in the future from hotel motel tax. So in this fund, if car rental tax in twenty-two doesn't bring in the two million eight, then I'll have to take money out of the general fund to make that up. So this fund is contingent on that. And then if these revenues don't materialize, if COVID doesn't ease up, then um we'll have to cut these expenses back again. But you can see in fiscal year twenty-one, it was hard, you couldn't cut and match the revenue. Five seventy-eight versus two million.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
All right.
Convention Center Fund. You all know, we're talking about refinancing um certain bond issues that we have. We give cash flow relief. A key to making this fund work is getting the refinancing done, which saves us five million dollars in cash flow in fiscal year twenty-two. It also saves that amount in twenty-three. So the key to these projections is being able to get that financing done and relieving that payment. The Convention Center Fund has no cash. Convention Center Fund owes the following. It owes the general fund of one point eight million, the electric fund eight hundred thousand, and water sewer fund two and a half million. Debt service is covered from hotel motel tax, but the operations are at a deficit, the same as the Arena. Operations cash flow shortfall for this year is gonna be covered by a hundred and twenty-one thousand from the special district. That's that special district you have around the GICC. It's gonna be covered by transfer from the electric fund and covered by a inf- uh transfer of cash from the general fund of two million two. So you heard earlier, the Arena's gonna get a million four. This fund gets two million two. And then in thi- this is for FY twenty-one. And in twenty-two, the operating loss is gonna be covered by hotel motel tax. Get to the actual numbers. So this fund hadn't always been quite this bad. In pre-COVID, it had nine million dollars in revenue. Uh pre-COVID and post-COVID, the four months, it had eight million dollars in revenue. So in twenty-one, we budgeted eight million, fifty percent is four million. It only brought in seven hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars through the first six months. So basically, that number times two um plus a wee bit, we're projecting FY twenty-one's gonna bring a million seven fifty-four in revenues. We budgeted expenses of uh eight million one ninety-six. Fifty percent of that number is four million eighty-three. You can see by cutting, y'all saved a million dollars of expenses. Um we think for the year, it'll be four million eight, so the operating deficit is three million dollars. But you can see here in um uh twenty, it had operating deficit, but there were some um pretty big expenses. You got depreciations of non-cash item here. So these revenues aren't comparable to the budget. We don't use depreciation. So.
I'm sorry. Um the projected revenue does not include anything that we may receive from uh being a vaccination location, though. Is that correct?
I don't think so. I think we talked about it, but I need need Althea.
That is correct. That is correct.
Right.
So a million seven fifty-four is a far cry from eight million and nine million. So you can see it just, COVID just hammered this fund. So um you can see here that um here was debt service on the debt to tote the Convention Center's five million eight. And so this operating deficit and the debt service requires eight million nine sixty in cash flow to carry this fund for a year. Where would that money come from? We got the GICC Special District of a hundred and twenty-one thousand, the Electric Fund five thirty-one. By the way, that wouldn't be there if y'all hadn't done the things that you did back in June, uh cutting expenses and raising the revenue. The general fund is two million two. Again, thank the good Lord, y'all have got that money saved, and you had it put back, that you have it. And then six million ninety-one thousand from the hotel motel tax fund. So let's go to twenty-two. A big key driver to twenty-two, we refinance the debt. Notice the debt service goes from five million eight to just eight hundred thousand. And that five million dollars drops the cash flow shortfall to two million four. So I've still got a an operating deficit of a million two. And um that's driven by seven million two sixty-nine in revenues, which is still less than twenty twenty, which was pre and post-COVID together, seven million two sixty-nine. And um eight million five in expenses, which is right on on par with what the budget was back in twenty-one. And so we got a million two operating deficit, a million two nineteen uh for um uh non-operating items, so we've got covered two million four seventy-two. And that number's coming a hundred and sixty thousand from that special district property tax around the GICC and two million three from hotel motel tax. And then you can see in two thousand and twenty-three, the effects of that refinancing, by taking the principal payments and putting them at the end of the debt service like we talked about, it'll save us about uh four million dollars here. And so the operating deficit plus debt service is three million, and we're taking that um one sixty from the special district property tax and three million five from uh hotel motel tax.
Do you anticipate any any problems with the restructure?
Well, you you don't know. I mean, I um the the key to getting it done was doing these projections and showing a potential buyer that we had a plan in place and we would pay it back. So I'm comfortable with this. I'm confident in this. I think we'll get it done, but I haven't gotten it done yet.
Is it is it already been advertised?
Well, um um I've sent out term sheets to various banks, and I've got two interested in it. But um it's not something you like advertised. We we try to bid it out by using a term sheet, but um so we don't have a commitment from anybody.
So our depositors, our son trust, they threw it, I'm sorry. Can't can't can't, aren't they compelled to do it if we ask them, since they still hold our cash?
They they have been super supportive. They have been, they want to do it. They wanna help us. But you know, they got to give me a good interest rate. Um there's all kind of things go into that. I mean, they 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 say in sweet, nice things, they really care about the relationship with y'all, but they they wanna know they're gonna get paid back. And so their commitment has been waiting on me to give them these projections. And I I need to know what y'all think about it, if y'all wanna make any changes to it tomorrow, the next day, depending on if y'all are okay with it, or if you wanna make changes, I'm I'm gonna send this to them. And hopefully in a week or so, I'll have a commitment, or not, but I'll know for sure in a week. And if they don't do it, I'll go someplace else. But right now, I'm thinking that they're gonna do it because they value their relationship with you.
Well, I do think that we might be able to make some conservative projections on the FY twenty-two revenue for the Convention Center upward. Based upon the.
From seven million two?
Uh, no, oh. I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong number.
So I've gone.
Um, no, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm sorry, FY twenty-one. Sorry.
You think FY twenty-one might be more than million seven fifty-four?
I think it might be. Ms. Miller? Based upon the the vaccination?
We are hopeful. We are um working now on getting money from the vaccination, so we are hopeful. I feel comfortable at the one point seven and we.
So my my goal, Mayor, mine and Althea's goal is to make this as worst as it can be, so that we ain't gotta come back to you.
Right, right.
We've tried to be conservative.
Right. We don't need any surprises.
Absolutely. I wasn't trying to go crazy, was I? I I thought, never mind.
Well, you scared me to death. I thought I thought you were.
We're working on getting the vaccination money. That'll make a big difference.
Yeah. I I just want to throw something out there. If worst case scenario, I I think we should have a conversation about possibly getting looks at of selling the arena. I'm just saying, we still would own it, it would still accomplish our mission, but it'll seem like it's got a, it's carrying a lot of debt. It's coming from.
How can you sell it and still own it?
Um, I I I'm let's let Mr. Wall go ahead and have his make his presentation.
All right. Um, do I have just ten minutes left? Isn't that right?
Well, technically, you had forty-five minutes, so but go ahead. This is important information, so go ahead.
I'll try to talk fast. The Redevelopment Authority, BIDAR, it uh has no cash cushion. The general fund's gonna need to transfer two and a half million to it this fiscal year to cover its shortfall. The refinancing is expected to save cash flow on it for three point six million in twenty-two. That's a key driver to the twenty-two budget. As y'all know, it needs land sales. Fund owes the following thirteen million dollars. Electric Fund, six million seven, Arena Fund, three million nine, Water Sewer Fund, two million two. But the only way this is gonna get paid is from land sales. Look at the actual numbers. So it's not doing too bad for for revenues in pre-COVID. In nineteen, it was a million seven. In twenty twenty, it was two million nine. It had a budget of three million one thirty-one in twenty-one. We think the revenues is three million and thirty-one thousand. And so its main revenues, of course, is um those rental and commissions and uh the uh uh payments, the pilot payments and the fees that it gets from the one eighth to one percent when it finances things. And so it has a good, stable revenue source that wasn't affected by COVID, so it met its revenue budget. Already done a good job about expenses. The expenses you can see were million four, two million one. It was budgeted a million five fifty through the first six months. He could have spent seven seventy-five. He's only spent three oh eight. We're projecting for the years, just a million dollars, five hundred thousand dollars less than budget. So it'll have an operating cash flow positive of two million one. But it has to cover land purchases here, and it has to cover debt service here. And so that positive cash flow, together with this, gives it a five million one deficit. And the five million one is covered with seven hundred and twenty-five thousand from hotel motel tax, two hundred and fifty thousand from the TAD, five hundred thousand from the electric fund, thanks to all the good, hard work y'all did, two hundred and fifty thousand from that GICC Special Tax District, two million dollars from from um the general fund and a million four oh nine from the car rental tax. So it'll leave its cash flow at zero. Going forward in twenty-two, we're expecting its revenues to go up a wee bit uh from pilot fees, one eighth to one percent fees. Expenses to be about the same. And so it's two million three forty-two is positive cash flow. Look at the big difference in the debt service. Six million eight versus three million two from that refinancing. So finally, in twenty-two, we get that refinancing done, its cash flow deficit is a million three. And we've got a million five transfer in, and it's coming seven hundred and twenty-five thousand from hotel motel tax fund, two hundred and fifty thousand from that GICC Special District, and five hundred and sixty-four thousand from car rental tax. And it'll leave it with a cash balance of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And you can see, we're still got the benefits of that refinancing in twenty-three. And um and uh given that year, it's gonna actually uh have a million one seventy-eight, a little bit lower uh operating and uh cash flow deficit after debt service. And again, that transfer's coming in from the same exact sources as before. Any questions? One other thing I wanted to point out is um in the budget for twenty-one, we have budgeted three million two sixty-nine from land sales. And um we are, for twenty-one, have six hundred and sixty-three thousand of revenue from land sales. And as y'all y'all know, the key to getting land sales over Six West is putting the infrastructure in that mainly Rhodes Avenue. Last fund is the general fund. FY twenty-one revenues were good, except for fines and forfeitures and license and permits. The pandemic COVID affected those two categories, the revenues and general fund. It has a great fund balance, twenty-one point two million, but as you know, we've all talked about it. Um it's uh not all cash. Of that twenty-one million two fund balance, a million eight due to it from the Convention Center and seven million two from the electric fund. So it actually has cash, twelve million dollars. For this fiscal year, our projections are we're gonna take five point six million of that twelve million. For this fiscal year, our projections are we gonna take five point six million of that twelve million in order to cash flow the arena fund, the convention center fund, and the BIDA fund.
Now, Mr. Walt, when uh Doug Moses was here a couple of months ago, or maybe it was about a month ago, gosh, time flies, um. I asked him the question about um actual cash in the general fund, and he said it was fourteen million. And I understand that there is, there, there's a two million dollar discrepancy there between what Mr. Moses said and what you're saying. And there is an explanation, and so I'd like, like you to lay that out.
In the balance sheet, you have something called current assets and current liabilities. And um, um, you net those two to come up with what really is like free cash. And current liabilities are things that you haven't paid yet, but you gotta pay. And in that current liabilities, it are various payables totaling, I think it was like a million eight or something. That brought that fourteen million down to really twelve million, if you had to net out the payables, and they're things that the auditors accrue. For that current fiscal year that just haven't paid yet.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes. So uh. Here's part of the recommendation to y'all, you're getting four point six million dollars, I call them Biden bucks, I know that's got a name, but it's not called the CARES Act anymore, it's got some other name to it. But you all are gonna get four point six million from that one point nine trillion um bill that the Congress passed, uh that President Biden asked them to, to do, you're gonna get four point six million, come to you in two payments. Two million three for twenty-two and two million three for twenty-three. And uh I know you have budgeted, and you'll see in the numbers, you budgeted some portion of that. I would like to see y'all take all of that and put it in the general fund, there are four categories that uh this money can be spent on. And one of the categories is to replace lost revenues due to the pandemic. And that is what I would like to recommend you to do. And um the key thing is I'm, Althea and I are not recommending a property taxing increase at this time. If we look at the revenues, look at pre-COVID, it was twenty-nine million. After COVID set in for about four months, it fell to twenty-six million for actual twenty twenty. Your twenty-one budget was twenty-five million. You can't really tell anything about the six months, because these revenues aren't linear, but let's look at the full, full fiscal year. You budgeted nineteen billion dollars in taxes, property taxes, sales taxes, we think you'll get twenty million in five eighty. Oddly enough, during COVID, sales taxes are higher than they have been in the previous year. Property taxes should be about the same, notice licenses and permits were budgeted at three million two ninety-six. Um, through the six months, that part is, isn't linear, it was a million one eleven, wha- what we should have brought in is five thirty-seven is what we, um, I'm sorry, million six forty-eight. Is uh the six months of budget, we only brought in a million one eleven, but some of those things are not linear, and so we actually think you'll get close to budget of three million two forty. Fines and forfeitures, though, we aren't projecting that, it was nine thirty-two pre-COVID, seven twenty-seven, and a mix of pre and post-COVID. We had budgeted nine hundred thousand for twenty-one, for the first six months, it's four hundred and fifty thousand, we only collected two hundred thousand. And so for the year, we were only budgeting three fourteen, so a substantial decrease in fines and forfeitures. Um, so we, we budgeted twenty million five, twenty million eight eighty, we think we'll get twenty-five million four eighty-two in revenues in the general fund. We go to expenses, um, we were thirty-three million pre-COVID, thirty-three million one pre and post-COVID. You all made substantial cuts, you asked your department heads to actually take a cut in salaries, um, we had a budget of twenty-nine million. I actually think I will come in at twenty-seven million for the year. So the uh operating shortfall is two million three fifty-nine, is what we're projecting for twenty, for two thousand and twenty-one. Transfers in at three million nine ninety-five, transfers out of six million one sixty-eight, so we'll have a net change in fund balance of four million five thirty-two. So that twenty-one million dollar fund balance will go to sixteen million, we make the adjustments for cash, and we'll have seven million dollars in cash at the end of June thirtieth, twenty-one. And you know, it's gonna be different than this, we don't know exactly, you still got three months left, but it should be somewhere close around that. Going forward in two thousand and twenty-two. You can see we got a wee bit of increase in property taxes and sales taxes, licenses and permits, we're hoping to catch up on that. Included in this number are the Biden bucks, where you budgeted some portion of that number. And so we have a pretty substantial increase in revenues for the general fund for FY twenty-two. Also, a substantial increase in expenses from twenty-seven million to thirty-two million three ninety-one. But if all the other budgets, all the other funds work out the way we thought, we'll have five million one one six in transfers in, and only seven hundred and seventy thousand going out. And so um we're projecting in twenty-two, we won't add or subtract to the fund balance. And in twenty-three, we're drawing down the fund balance just a wee bit, what's driving this, of course, is, is twenty-seven million to thirty-two million is, is a five million dollar increase in expenses. That's it, Mayor.
Uh, well, let's talk a little bit about that, because we are in the middle of budget discussions, so. Where are we seeing that number?
So.
Where are we seeing the increases in that?
So um. Five million three in general government, see, you can see it, but general government here. So in twenty-one, it was five million three, going to six million thirty, so about a million dollars. We are nearly two million dollars in, in police. Um, fire is about the same. About seven hundred thousand in recreation. Two hundred thousand in inspection. Engineering is about the same. About the same in building and grounds, parks is about the same. About three hundred thousand in highways and streets. About the same in housing development. About the same in debt service. So basically, it's general fund. Police, and a little bit of the other things.
Ms. Flor Bradley, can you talk a little bit about? Those areas where, where things are, well, where the projections are, are increasing?
Well, if you look at um pre-COVID, um twenty nineteen, actual expenses were thirty-three point five million. And um twenty twenty, which we had four months of COVID, it was um the expenses were at thirty-three point one million. Um, the, the purpose, the reason for the increase is, um, in twenty twenty-one, we did reduce the budget, we made some adjustments, we pretty much. I hear an echo, we pretty much um reduced the police.
If, if you're not speaking, can you please go ahead and mute yourself?
Okay, thank you, um, and police, we reduced their capital budget in twenty twenty-one, and in addition, all across the board, um, we froze positions. And so what you're seeing in twenty twenty-two is um us restoring some positions, not all, but some positions, and also restoring the police capital budget. And that was about one point one million dollars in itself. So that's what you're, sorry, so that's what you're seeing, is there was uh us restoring um positions previously frozen and restoring the capital budgets across the board.
Wasn't the capital budget for a significant number of cars as well?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions on that? All right.
The other budget was talking about replacing all the positions that had been previously frozen or not?
Sorry?
The ones frozen that were frozen?
Well, in twenty twenty-one, there were um positions frozen, in twenty twenty-two, we are restoring uh most of those positions, not all, but most.
But, but, but not, not all at one time at the beginning of the fiscal year, there, that's gonna be staged out throughout the year, right?
Only for police.
Right.
Other departments are budgeted at a hundred percent.
Okay. But, but police is a significant number.
Yes.
That'll change it somewhat, yeah.
Can we have the opportunity, perhaps, and I know this is a discussion during budget to, to think a little bit more about staging some of the other departments as well?
Um, I will, I will be emailing the um council the position schedule Wednesday, and then um I guess we can have that discussion come um our next budget meeting.
So Althea, is this the uh thing that I requested, where you show the, the positions that are vacant, the number of positions that are vacant versus what's budgeted?
Yes, sir.
Good, and that, and you're gonna do that by a quarter or month or whatever?
So someone is not muted, and they also have the recording or the, the stream going, so if you could just close the stream, it would, it would be, it would, it would be appreciated. Um. But so we'll get that information on Wednesday, Ms. Flor Bradley, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any other questions? All right, hearing none, we will move on to item two.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wall.
Thank, thank y'all very much, I wish I had better news.
Better to get the bad news up front than find out about it later, you guys have done a fantastic job.
Thank you, sir. Um, I'm free to go, Mayor.
Yes, sir, unless you just want to hang around.
No, I'm good, thank y'all so much.
All right, take care. All right, item number two is a presentation on NeoGov, it's an applicant tracking system by NeoGov Senior Enterprise Account Executive Vincent Van Aker, did I pronounce your name correctly?
Yep, Van Aker.
Van Aker, I apologize.
No worries.
This is through the Department of Human Resources and Risk Management, so Dr. Baker, Mr. Van Aker, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor Council, um, as you probably, guys probably know, our current applicant tracking software is pretty much out of date and um it has very limited functionality, so. We have looked at the NeoGov system, and I'll let Mr. Van Aker um talk a little bit about the product, and then we'll open it up for questions. Benny?
Perfect, thank you, Dr. Baker, and thank you everyone for a few moments of your time this evening, I know we're a little bit crunched on time, but we should be able to cover everything that we need to here in short order. One quick request, Mr. Hicks, if you wouldn't mind, am I able to actually share this presentation on my screen, just so I can make through, make sure I get through everything quickly?
Yes. Uh, Shavella, can you release, thanks?
Yep, there we go, okay, so that same screen should pop up there, the NeoGov intelligent HR. Uh, so, so to get started, for, for those of you that may not be as familiar with who NeoGov is, um, gonna give you a high level there, and then we'll walk through the specific scope that Dr. Baker and I have been working to put together for today's presentation. And as he mentioned, wrap it up with a quick Q and A session if there's anything remaining for the group here on the call. From an organizational standpoint, NeoGov's actually been around for over twenty years, uh born in the late nineties with an exclusive focus on government. And that really continues to be its biggest differentiator, kind of its niche, if you will, in the software space. If you fast forward to twenty twenty-one, we have over six thousand government agency customers nationwide, a number of those partnerships, all levels of government across the state of Georgia, and you'll see actually at the close of our presentation, a list of those agencies. And more than happy to connect each and every one of you with references for follow-up purposes if needed going forward. Uh, now typically, the big follow-up question there is why, right, why NeoGov, why do so many government agencies turn in that direction when it comes to this type of technology? And it really distills down to three components, number one, as I mentioned, we're public sector focused, right, to our customers, that means we speak and understand your language. Number two, from a, from a demographic perspective, as far as our customer base, the need, what makes up the NeoGov community is the sharing of best practices and best-of-breed technology across the industry as a whole. Number three would be the delivery of its software, which is one hundred percent web-based. I can tell you right now, there has a, been a dynamic and concerted shift in the public sector to move towards web-based or online technologies for obvious reasons, as a result of everything we've been dealing with the last twelve months. Now, when it comes to the scope of the project that Dr. Baker and I have been working on, you should see the screen start to change there on your end in just a moment. Um, we're not gonna focus on all the great things that NeoGov does, it's, it's a quite large and scalable system, uh what we call NeoGov's platform. Instead, we're gonna drill right into that recruitment and onboarding component that you see in the bottom right-hand portion of the screen. Now, the recruit module is comprised of three components or products, the top portion, what you see is called governmentjobs.com, is the external advertising component, attracting top talent, reaching a large audience. Of candidates that are looking for government employment opportunities. Once they apply for positions or have an interest, that's where the more recruitment or applicant tracking specific technology comes in, which is called Insight. Now, Insight will automate every step of the recruitment process, from posting positions online to taking in applications electronically, automatically screening our candidates to identify top talent. Efficiently getting them in front of our department heads to conduct interviews and make our final hiring decisions. From there, that brings us to the onboarding phase, once we've identified the candidate we're moving forward with, we bring that employee into our organization through onboard, which automates that new hire experience. From completing forms like your I-nine and W-four, to assigning trainings or tasks and acknowledgements, those things that we need to do to create a fully electronic employee record. Now, to dive in a little bit deeper on each individual component, I'm gonna fast forward to uh the back half here of the presentation, and we'll start within that advertising piece, which is called governmentjobs.com. And if you're not familiar, it's the largest public sector-specific job board, you can think of it sort of like an Indeed, that was designed specifically for those that are looking for government employment opportunities. That portion of our system has over thirty-seven million candidates that have created profiles, a hundred and twenty-five million applications that have been completed, and two point five million hires that have been sourced from the site itself. So as I mentioned, certainly casting a wide net, but diving deeper into a government-specific talent pool and identifying those candidates that have the qualifications for the positions that we're posting. Now, when it comes to the interface, think about your citizens and those that are gonna be applying for positions, the landing page, or what we call the career pages, that's embedded into the city's website, will look something like what you see on the screen here. This entire page is configurable and customizable for the city, I encourage you, if you have a moment, feel free to peruse other agencies in the state of Georgia, like the city of Albany or Alpharetta. We use this system right now to get an idea of what their pages look like, it will be a very similar look and feel, it is also one hundred percent ADA compliant. Additionally, the system offers the ability to post job descriptions, even for those positions we may not necessarily be recruiting for, which is especially helpful for, for candidates that may be looking for job opportunities within the city. But may not necessarily have the specific criteria for roles that you're recruiting for right now, it's what we call passive recruitment, and we'll circle back to this, that you see at the bottom there, uh where you see job interest cards. When it comes to the application process, the idea behind NeoGov in general is twofold, to be both comprehensive but extraordinarily user-friendly. The entire application is completely configured at the agency level to make sure that we can customize our questions, identify our key and critical qualifiers. And of course, create a user-friendly portal for candidates to apply and then manage their recruitment steps going forward. From a scheduling perspective, another really popular function, again, for obvious reasons from the last thirteen months, is providing much more self-service components to candidates, which would include scheduling. If I'm selected for an interview, I can actually schedule the, my own time, right, based on my availability and those available time slots on the city's end, for those that are involved in the hiring, interview, and recruitment process. As I mentioned a moment ago, the job interest card functionality will allow candidates in for the city to build a candidate pool uh of interested individuals. Who have maybe certain skill sets that align with positions that the city may not be recruiting for in this very moment. So now, when we go and do post those positions, those candidates are notified automatically with a link that will drive them back to the city's career portal, so I can go ahead and apply, and certainly create, again, much more of a passive recruitment strategy. Lastly, are some of the, the links or integration capabilities when it comes to advertising, most organizations we work with will certainly post to, and connect to their different social media outlets, it's a big emphasis point for most agencies across the board to connect with as many people as possible. To create a lot of interest, buzz, and engagement when it comes to our recruitments each step of the way. Now, once we've attracted this talent, that's where us at HR, of course, we need to take over and certainly facilitate our individual recruitment steps. The applicant tracking portion, which is called. The applicant tracking portion, which is called Insight, and that's what you're seeing here, will have a dashboard summarizing all positions we're currently recruiting for, how many applications we've received in real time, as well as a function called Application Health that will allow us to utilize data and analytics to ensure, number one, do we have enough candidates applying? Are we getting enough engagement to make sure that we're hitting specific thresholds and finding top talent? Or number two, maybe we're falling a little bit short and we might need to take a different or more strategic approach to our advertising and outreach campaigns. The internal functions, which is what you're seeing here, is called an exam plan, recruitment evaluation steps. Now, these are typically configured on a position-by-position basis to help us effectively and efficiently identify talent pools and those that are most closely qualified or most highly qualified for the positions they're applying for. Now, this might look very different for a police officer position than it does for someone who's applying for a position in IT. That might include physical exams, written exams, psychological and polies. And all of that is interchangeable within the individual recruitment to ensure that we are conducting the appropriate steps necessary to hire for the role. Screening and selection is often one of the most cumbersome tasks that HR departments have, not using a systematic technology like you're seeing here. The system offers the ability to automatically screen and sort candidates based on the answers and scoring plans designed within the minimum qualification steps. So we can easily and automatically identify those that do or do not have the minimum qualifiers while also searching for preferred qualifications that might give that candidate a leg up on the competition. Rating matrices are another really big function that's becoming extremely popular right now for a number of different reasons, but specifically for a lot of agencies that have diversity and inclusion initiatives. Um, there's really three functions that make up some of the emphasis points that this system is designed to do to really support those initiatives. Number one is creating a rating matrix, or what you might consider a standardized rubric for interviews and follow-up questions to make sure that we're fair across the board and how we're assessing each candidate, along with the ability to blind PII and run reports like adverse impact or EEO and demographics. Again, to make sure that we have as much of a fair and equitable hiring process as possible. I've touched on reporting and analytics already. It's a big emphasis of NeoGov's system platform-wide. Within recruitment, there's over a hundred standardized statistical reports. As I mentioned, time to hire, adverse impact, EEO and demographics, even just vacancy reports. Extremely helpful to be able to run those in real time, along with creating what we call an analytics dashboard to share data as quickly and as user-friendly as possible. Talent search functionality also allows our team to take more of a proactive approach to recruitment. Most recruitment in general traditionally is thought of as a little bit more reactive. We post a position, we wait for candidates to apply. Talent search allows you to tap into those thirty seven million candidates I had mentioned a moment ago and identify based on key qualifiers, criteria, certifications, or just general geography. Candidates that may not have applied to the city of College Park but have the requirements that we're looking for. Now we have an opportunity through the system to reach out to those candidates proactively to identify who may be interested in opportunities that we may have coming up on the forefront here within our city. Job boosting technology allows you to take that one step further and advertise through different sites or specific initiatives or target markets that we might be looking for. I see this oftentimes in hard-to-fill positions. Might might be IT, for example. Might we might want to reach out through specific avenues, channels, and websites. And that can be done all automatically through the system and done as a response to some of the strategic reporting that's built around a recruitment structure. Lastly, and this is an underlying theme throughout the system, the idea of sharing information. Again, it's a very big government emphasis point, right, whether it be sharing forms, best practices, uh, sharing job descriptions, class back and salary information, to use that data to work together as an industry to continuously improve on process and how to best utilize this type of technology. Lastly, the last few minutes here will wrap up in onboard. Now that we've hired that employee, we're going to bring them into our organization through what's called a virtualized checklist. Now, my welcome portal as a new hire will look something like what you see on the screen here. And there's a lot of configurable and customizable widgets to make this process your own. A lot of times, you might see a copy of the job description or maybe a copy of the employee handbook and policy and procedures manual. On the right-hand side is where you see the checklist, right? And that's kind of that big-ticket item that most agencies kind of associate when it comes to onboarding, completing my I nine, e-verification of that document, my W four, direct deposit form, training videos, all that fun stuff that we need to do as a new hire to create a fully electronic employee record. All of these tasks and initiatives will also have a due date associated. So again, that takes the responsibility off the shoulders of those of us in leadership from sending reminders, as the system will do so proactively on its own.
Mr. Van Aker?
Yes.
We're we're coming close to the close of our time. I just wanted to let you know that.
Yep, no problem. We'll take another minute here and then I'll certainly turn it back to the group for questions. Mentor and chat features become have become really popular, of course, to assign a maybe a senior member of the team. A new team member can communicate with electronically, even in a scenario where I can't tap that person on the shoulder. As I've touched on, the idea is to automate all new hire forms, which would include electronic verification with DHS. That's a fully functional and integrated component of onboard. We touched on the community element, the sharing of forms and leaning on and leveraging best practices from other neighboring agencies. Onboard is certainly a system designed for new hires, but it also facilitates any type of change to employment status. Easy example here is offboarding. Maybe we have an employee retiring at the end of the month. Now we would assign an offboarding checklist to make sure they return city-given assets, that they complete their exit interview form, right? Everything that needs to be buttoned up prior to that employee's departure. As a leader, manager, supervisor, all of your direct reports would be aligned within this system. So any any corresponding tasks or action items assigned to those employees, I can monitor from more of an administrative perspective and ensure nothing slips through the cracks. Any NeoGov product will also allow for exporting of data or, in this case, forms if you do prefer to store those in a third-party document management system, or if you maybe just want to keep them in hard or paper copies. The last component here is an impersonate feature, which allows HR administrators to really help troubleshoot for any new users, especially employees that may not be familiar with this type of technology. So I can assist somebody remotely without having to knock on IT's door. I can do that myself, again, as an HR administrator or HR liaison. With that, though, I will close. This will kind of cover just a quick summary of NeoGov, that's customer-based and really where we focus. And lastly, with the list of agencies we currently partner with across the state of Georgia. I'll turn it back to uh to Dr. Baker and the team and open it up for any questions that anyone might have.
Does the body have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Van Aker.
I got a I got a quick question. When you when you set your questions, uh, how do you work with uh uh Dr. Baker and and the different department heads in College Park to establish the questions that you're going to be asking the applicant?
Yep, it's a great question. And and the short answer is those questions are designed and maintained at the agency level. So Dr. Baker and those department heads would actually use the system internally to determine what are our minimum qualifiers? What questions do we need to ask for this role? And then how do we develop the scoring plan behind the scenes to identify automatically who meets those criteria and who doesn't? It's not it's not a scenario where NeoGov would have like a standard set of questions and that we design them and maintain them. This is a software-as-a-service tool that Dr. Baker and those that are administrators within the system would be able to design themselves locally.
They can design and and adapt questions based on what's applicable to College Park versus other cities and so forth.
Exactly.
Any other questions?
Yes, I I have a couple. Uh, thanks for all the answers that were provided prior to the meeting. So I'm not going to re-ask most of those, but uh, one thing uh for, this is really a question for Mr. Hicks. Uh, is IT happy with the backup plan that they have? Because there is going to be table of organization data, I presume, that is stored out in their uh computer facility. If that gets wiped out, where is the backup for it? Is there a secondary site? Are we expected to maintain a backup for it that we can load upload it and so forth?
Yep, yeah, great question. So we.
Mr. Van Aker, I think the question was for Mr. Hicks.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Hicks.
So uh, Councilman Clay and Mayor Council, I actually went over the D R scenario with Vinnie. And they do have a backup plan in place for College Park. They have another offsite storage area that will maintain our data in the event the particular portal where it's currently stored is down. So to say that in a moment's time.
That 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 answered that answers my question. Uh, so that table of organization is there's a substantial amount of work that goes into maintaining that. Dwight, that is maintain, we have a table of organization, I presume, maintain a new world, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is that automatically transferred then into uh NeoGov? Or do we have to recode it by hand into the NeoGov uh system?
Um, NeoGov will will does integrate with our new world system. So there's.
Yes.
So when we make a change in the TO for our organization, it is automatically reflected in NeoGov without any manual intervention required? Okay. That's good. I got I got the others.
All right.
Play all across the SFTP server.
Pardon?
All across the SFTP server.
I'm not sure I know what you're saying.
It's done across the secure file transfer protocol server.
Oh, 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 okay. I protocol. Okay, I got you now. Thank you.
Councilman Gay?
Was was it a budgeted item? I didn't notice see it on the agenda.
I believe it was budgeted, and I think we're considering it uh during our regular session.
For the first year, for the second and third year of the contract, those will be encumbered in the the upcoming fiscal years.
Dr. Baker, your audio is not the best.
From the office, um, I said, well, for the first year, the funds are budgeted for the second and third year, they will be encumbered in the in those following budgets respectively.
One one thing I should probably make the council aware that I got an answer to my question, and that is if we decide to uh cancel for convenience during the year, we are obligated to pay the full year's amount, even if we've only used, say, six months of the of the service. I'm not saying whether that's good or bad. I'm just saying that as a fact because we're used to the idea you cancel, you pay what you owe up to date. Up to date includes all the way to the end of the year.
Well, if that happens, what happens to the data? Can we get into the data or does it cancel right then?
Yes, we will access access to the data. It'll be archived for our in their files, but we can retrieve that information. In the event that we decide to purge all of the data, we have to send them notifications that we want the data to be purged.
And and I believe that data can even be accessed in the future. Am I correct? Even if we're not a customer at that point?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's that's good.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Van Aker, for your presentation. Thank you, Dr. Baker.
Thank you.
I guess we'll be seeing you a little bit later in the regular session, which is starting in two minutes.
See you in two minutes.
Yes, you know, spend spend those two minutes wisely. Or just stay here because we're having such a good time.